All right, our meeting is now in session. Mark, would you like to lead the discussion concerning our architect search? Where is Mark? There he is, okay.
There we go. I put it in mute, so when I was taking my snack, people couldn't hear me chewing. The, the board requested that we open up a, a search for architects to help with our upcoming elementary project. So we put out a request for, what's the Q, Matt, qualifications?
Yes.
Request for qualifications process and we received eight proposals. Matt and I reviewed the eight proposals and we sent four proposals to the board for review. As I put in my cover email, we, we feel strongly that two of the proposals are, 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 are set apart from the other six. And that would be from the Height Architect Firm and Walter Robbins. The Height Firm, just a real quick synopsis and then I'll let Matt talk a little bit about it. They have an energy efficient design that was appealing to us. It looks similar to the, the wing approach that Shawboro and Jarvisburg have. But one thing that was in their proposal that really made our eyes light up, they have a, a metal roof project and it has a 20-year no-leak guarantee. And so if you could actually go 20 years without putting a dime into roof expenses and maintenance, that's a, that's a pleasant comment to read in a proposal. They have, they have built the design, the closest one to us that I could see in their proposal was in Pitt County. And I believe they've done multiple projects in, in Pitt County over the years. And so that's the design that was part of their proposal. For Walter, Walter Robbins, that's a company that's got history with Currituck County. We thought that they were involved in three projects here, Moyac Middle, Shawboro and Jarvisburg. But actually, they also did the media center at Moyac Elementary School. The Moyac Elementary Media Center was not part of the gymnasium and extra classroom renovation project. Apparently, the media center was put on, on later on.
Yes, it was.
And so Walter Robbins has a vested interest in 40% of our buildings right now. So that's, that's pretty significant. Their, their design that is on the school approved design proposals is the design for Shawboro and Jarvisburg. That's the one that is on DPI's approval list. So those are the two that, that stood apart. The other ones, what I took from them is one, they haven't built very close to here. And the one that did, he did work for COA and I think the Department of Health and Human Services down in Dare County. And while that's nice and they can say they produce nice buildings, it, it's, it's not an elementary school. You know, there, there's a difference between a college library and what needs to go into an elementary school, in my opinion. And so there, they came up with decent proposals, but they didn't really highlight a lot of elementary or middle school schoolwork in their proposals. Matt, you had some, some things to add?
Uh, they were the, the two that you spoke over, the three that stood out to me, stood out to you. Height has some innovative design ideas. They have a lot of energy efficiency seemingly built into the designs. I do love the standing theme metal roofs with the overhangs because it would eliminate A, dealing with flat roof design, rubber roofs, plastic PVC roofs and the problems that come along with those, the seams, the, the tears. And the overhang of the roof would, would eliminate the flashing leaking problems that you have with a standard square pocket roof with a top flashing on the top wall. It eliminates the, all of the equipment sitting out on top of the roof failing in the weather. It puts everything into a designed mechanical corridor above the school for easy access during any kind of weather conditions. Opinion's opinion, I, my, my opinion, when I read everything, was they stood out. Walter Robbs has a good product evidently because we've used them quite a bit. But just from my opinion, I think that Height has moved up with some innovations and, and even technology, energy efficiency, LED lighting, things of that nature, that for the price, it seems to be their bottom dollar price is better per square foot than Walter Robbs, even with the designs that we have with Jarvisburg and Shawboro. And after reading the documents more yesterday evening, Height gives a 90-day turnaround once you select a, select a product from them for getting everything from the design table to the permit office. And Walter Robbs is saying six months. So that's just my opinion. My opinion is that, that if we're gonna do something and with all of the height that's been put on this new elementary school for Currituck County, something new and different would stand out. That's pretty much what I'd say.
One thing I liked about the Height proposal is that the two that they gave us to look at, one was called the Star School or something like that.
Yeah.
And the other was a two-story. And I don't know if the same thing, you know, holds true, that it's cheaper to build up than out, but we have a limited budget and we would be able to talk to them about, you know, how much would the Star School be per square foot and then how much would the two-story be per square foot? And see if there'd be a cost there.
Would the two-story also do what you were talking about, Matt, with keeping all of the equipment under?
Yes.
Not outside?
Yes, their designs, all of their designs incorporate all of those, the same design ideas. The two-story school is basically...
I don't know if you can see it, but...
Yeah, the, as, as Dr. Dombney said, the, the two-story, I believe they've designed that for to keep a smaller footprint if you didn't have a lot of acreage to build on or if you needed more acreage for other things, which hopefully we don't because we're not gonna need, not gonna need a septic system according to the county manager. But, um, yeah, two-story, if that, if either design they had, I was impressed with. And they, and they incorporated all of their same design ideas into everything that they built.
Okay.
Another thing that was in that, that proposal, if, uh, I don't know how fast people went through it, but another thing that was in there is they inset their, their building on a 23-acre site. And so since we're, we've been talking to the, the property owners about 23 to 25 acres, they've got a little conceptual design on what their building would look like on that type of a, a site for the school.
Yeah, it looked good.
What, Matt, what have you had to do with the, well, Matt? Or whoever, because you haven't been here that long, but what has been done to the Moyac Middle, Shawboro Elementary and Jarvisburg? Has anything been done to them?
Since I've been here, Shawboro and Jarvisburg have had a lot of warranty recalls and the one thing that I get complained about the most on this, I believe it's the Shawboro one, is when you have a rubber roof, a EPDM roof or PVC roof or something of that nature, you're supposed to have walking pads and working pads along the roof so you can walk along on the roof. You can lay equipment down, you can work safely. And all of those pads have separated and flown away or they're flying away. And we've had a lot of, there's a lot of ripple effect going on, on Shawboro and Jarvisburg where either the underlayment wasn't installed properly and there's a lot of future damage coming. And it seems like every time I call for a warranty job on Shawboro, I end up getting a bill because it wasn't covered under warranty. It's, okay, the product's covered.
These were workmanship.
I just know that we have a lot of problems.
These were done...
Go ahead.
These were done under Walter Robbins?
Yes, yes. And it, it's a good product, it's just that, eh, flat roofs, the, the rubber products, the PVC products, they they have inherent problems that I'd, I'd love to get away from, but if I, but if I can't, they do have, they have a warranty as well, so.
But the other one that did the metal roof, if you think, would alleviate the problems we've had with Shawboro?
Some of them, yes.
Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yes, some of them.
So the, 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 uh, the quote on the, I believe it was like 213 and change from the Height proposal, uh, that's a, a rough estimate, I understand, but what I'm asking is, that is on a state's approved drawing and that's, uh, assuming we're in the wind zone that we're in with that from Height?
I'm looking, the school that, uh, the school that they quoted that 213 on, if I'm not mistaken, was down in Havelock, which is right on the coast south of us. And the way the, yeah, the way that, the way that the school, the, the North Carolina is designed, they take some heavier winds than we do at times. So that's the one thing about Height that I do know is that they've, uh, they're approved to build on the coast. Uh, I'm trying to think, yeah, Johnston County is where they quoted the 213 and a quarter.
And, and if I'm not mistaken, that was inclusive of, uh, was that library furniture? And kitchen, um, equipment and possibly some other, um, office furniture? Is that, is that true?
Yeah, I'm looking for it again, next page. Yeah, it says, uh, included all technology, library furnishing, kitchen furnishing, and site work and DOT improvements, improvements. So, yeah, it included a lot of, a lot of their standard features and more for that price.
What type of cooling, heating and cooling? I, I failed to see that on there. I did see what they were putting in on Jarvisburg, it was like a 200-ton unit, but I didn't know the heat and the cooling.
They go with, uh, they didn't really specify the size, but they, this, this company spec, they, they specialize in four-pipe boiler-chiller heating and cooling with no rooftop air handling units. It's built more like, um, like Moyac Middle and, and Currituck High School have air handling units in the classrooms with a, a cooling and heating system piping going through it like you would on your car or something like that.
Yeah, all the units are gonna be connected and they're gonna be, uh, controlled by, what is it, EDT or, uh?
Yeah, EDC Systems Energy Management Systems.
Yep, copy.
Just, just for the board's information and to, uh, uh, get Neil to smile in, in Raleigh, uh, to make sure that we're compliant with, uh, with statutes. When we make this first round decision on the, the architect to go with, the, the cost per square foot, that's just a, a reference number in their proposal and we can't use cost at this level to make a determination. It's based on qualifications and, and the site proposal that they, they've presented to us, that's on the DPI approved list. Then we get into contract negotiations and if they can't meet us where we think we need to be on square footage, then, uh, then we roll to, uh, uh, option two for the architects. And Rod, who's our contract expert, says that he doesn't remember a time when a school board and an architect firm can't reach an agreement. So he says architects want to, you know, show off what they can do for school systems and so they're very open to, uh, negotiations for cost. So that's just an FYI that this decision, this level is made on what they can do for us and what the school would potentially look like and what the design is, and then the, the cost comes in phase two.
Well, we could use, uh, past overages as part of our decision, could we not?
Yes.
If they went over budget previously.
Yes, yes.
Or not. Height seemed like they didn't go over budget, if at all, and the other companies seemed like they went as much as 10% on a project and averaged around four, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep, I also liked that Height, it said that they've, uh, I, I believe they put out there, we've never missed a deadline. I think that was their, their phrasing in there, uh, in their thing and that, you know, again, looking at, you know, schedules and, and trying to get the school online as quickly as possible, um, that was a, a nice statement to see too.
Matt and Mark, did you all just review the pay papers? Or did you actually talk with representatives from these firms?
We, we just did pages for meetings to this point. It, it's up to the, it's up to the board to decide if, uh, we want to have an interview before contract negotiations or if we call the contract negotiations the interview process as well.
I mean, I would like for Matt and Karen, and I guess, well, Mark, you won't be here when the actual building takes place, but I, I would like for Karen to have some conversation and sometimes, as Bill said earlier, you can tell more, um, you know, with a face-to-face interview, you're gonna have to work with them for a couple of years, so, you know. I don't know, that's just my thought, did, what, what's it been done in the past?
I, I, I like, um, all the questioning, who came up with the line of questioning? That, that you sent it.
Matt, did you, did you put together the, the bid package or did you work with Rod on that?
I worked with Rod and, and he and I went back and forth with, um, uh, some of my ideas, but mostly his from his past experience.
Well, I think it got right into the meat and potatoes and it was really, uh, well put together. I think, um, I, I, I don't think we need to drag it along because if we don't come up with an adequate price and they never miss a deadline and they're not over budget, I'd make a motion, we go ahead and, uh, consult or hire, uh, Height.
I second that motion.
I agree.
Any discuss?
I would, uh, oh, go ahead and ask for the discussion.
Any discussion?
Yes, when they, uh, go ahead and contact Height, I would like them to have them look at both schools, the single-story and the two-story school and see what type of price they can give us on both.
I agree.
I think that's a good idea, although I do question the use of a two-story school for elementary children. Uh, Dewan, you taught at Moyac. Do you, well, I guess you wouldn't teach anywhere else.
Yeah, well, that's true, but one of the things that, um, I think with the two-story is, um, and I looked at the site and, and the plans, but the security of it, it seems like they're within one building.
It's a good point.
I got you.
Ju- just for the record, I taught at Moyac too.
I, I, that's true, you did. Did you teach anywhere, more at Central, Mark? So what, how do you feel versus two-story with elementary kids versus one-story? For elementary kid, I mean, we don't have to decide on, are we going with one-story, two-story? I like the, the best idea of the roof. I like that, I like that, uh, that warranty now.
Having worked at Moyac with the, uh, older children, we had to go up and down the stairs quite a bit and go to that new, one of the newer wings. And we didn't have any problem with it. They always made sure that the upper-level students were the ones that were on the second floor to navigate the stairs. And it worked okay, so if that's a need, um, because it leaves more square footage for playground equipment or parking lots or something like that, it's, it's doable. But I do understand your concern about the stairs.
Well, and I'm sure we'd have to have...
I, I like, I like the aesthetics of a two-story. They're pretty.
They're gonna make you probably put in an elevator or two for, uh, uh, to comply with disabilities.
Elementary has a lot of...
But that's a fair amount of maintenance and upkeep, elevators and inspections.
Yeah, and I think we don't, we're not gonna have a problem with our site. Both sites that we're considering have ample space for a one-story. So we, we need to look at that, but that can be down the road. Any further discussion? Okay, I have a first and I have a second, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion carries?
Okay, we will, we will make contact with Height and, uh, um, between Matt, Rod, our legal representative and, and myself will, uh, uh, get the conversation started on a contract. Again, nothing gets approved by our attorney, nothing gets approved by the superintendent, nothing gets approved by the maintenance director. All contracts get final approval with the Board of Education. So when, uh, when we get to a point that we think we're in pretty good shape, we bring it to you five. Uh, if you don't think that that contract is in good shape, uh, you can send us back to the drawing board and, uh, and we'll try again. Uh, but Rod, Rod has been doing this a, a long time, so I'm sure he can guide us to a, um, a quality contract and a quality price.
Okay.
And if we have, and if we have to bring two to you, we can bring two contracts like, uh, Dr. Dombney requested. We can bring the contract for a one-story and a two-story and then at that time, the board can decide, um, you know, if there's cost savings one way or the other, uh, if that's, uh, that's enough to make a decision about one design or not, other than that, you can go with your preference.
Yeah, and we'll be looking for their guidance. I'm sorry.
I think that's a good idea, what Bill said, the one and the two-story. And Bill, when you did the schools before, and did you have your chairman of the board involved in each step of the way? I mean, would we have Karen involved in this process with the architects?
You mean with Walter Robbs, Callahan and Pierce, when we built the middle school? Yeah, the board, uh, board chairman, uh, was somewhat involved and I think it was Mary Ellen back then, either Mary Ellen or Johnny, that, you know, got involved and I know Johnny always had input, you know, with, you know, what was going on since he was, uh, in the building trades realm, so. But, you know, we did go and visit schools.
Okay, oh, we did.
Yeah.
Finished.
That would be a good idea.
Yeah. I, I would like to, I would like to see Karen involved in this process, starting now with the architect.
That's fine.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'd be happy to be involved, um, with that process. Okay, any, any other comments concerning our architect search? Okay, um, moving right along to our superintendent search. Um, we had some discussion in our closed session earlier. And so I would like to see what the pleasure of the board is at this, at this time.
I would like to make a motion that we open up the search with our human resource department, starting that ball rolling immediately.
I would second that motion. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to go along with what Will said and give us some more thinking time and talk about it more specifically at the May meeting because that'll give us another couple of weeks to see what else is gonna happen with this coronavirus stuff.
Well, I'd like, in, in, while we're, uh, taking a moment to the next meeting, I'd like to know what avenues, if we're gonna do, do the search, you know, what, uh, what will be the avenues that we would, uh, potentially advertise or how will we connect with the possible candidates? So if the HR department is going to be doing that, I'd like to know potentially how they would go about that and likely what the cost would be. If we're not gonna use like the Board of, uh, uh, Board of Education Association, for example, I'm assuming.
If, if we just do a normal search like we did for our principals, Mark, can you answer that? What's the cost involved?
Well, the, the, the cost will be just the, the, the people's time here, uh, but they're, they're under contract to, to work anyways. Uh, and so the, the, the cost will be minimal, there, there might be some sites that, uh, that, that charge for listings. I, I'm not aware of those, but the, you know, if you wanted to do the, the, the most complete outreach, uh, we might come around across a site that says, you know, to post on our site, you have to pay this much of a, a, a posting fee or something like that, but uh, it wouldn't be anything exorbitant, um, like you would undertake if, uh, if you had a consulting firm, uh, doing the search for you.
I think it was under a thousand the last time we did that. I think it was under a thousand.
You're correct.
I would say, I would say three to $5,000 maybe tops. Uh, and that would take into account whether you went paper copies and printing fees or, or anything that you would encounter, um, you know, in that process because the rest of it is done with in-house people, uh, and so you don't, uh, you don't have the, um, the, the compensation costs associated with that because it's people that are already under contract with the district.
Would that be versus 35 to 40,000 through the North Carolina School Board Association?
Yes, I, I think they're in that, they're in that price range, about $40,000 for a, to do a complete search.
And that was not including the, we would also have to pay expenses for people that we would be bringing in to interviews, so.
Yes.
That wasn't inclusive of that.
Right, we would have to pay for their travel, their time, their food expense, and on top of that.
So what, what I would probably...
I don't think we need to do School Board Association search because I'm, I, I don't think we need to spend $40,000. I, I do think we need to do the search that we normally do for principals. I think, uh, human resource can do that for us and I, again, think it doesn't hurt to start the process now. I mean, we, you know, we know it's superintendent, you know, July 31st and, uh, at, at the very least, have our central office get their ducks in a row and ready to push send by our next board meeting.
Uh, I would like that we would know if there's other consultant firms other than the Board of Education Association that might be used. I would like to know, uh, how long? And I, I would like to know if there's other avenues that we could potentially advertise other than just the ones we've been using for the principals. So I'd like to use this time between now and the next meeting for them to gather this information and then we'll make a decision based on that.
And I think Melissa has all the information from the last time we did the superintendent search and I think she has it in one place, so we'd be able to get that and have it by the next meeting.
Where is Ann, Ann Mark, if you're after, she certainly needs to be involved in this.
Yeah, I, I don't see her, I don't see her on the, the, the meeting right now, I'll see if she's in her office.
Mark, when I asked you yesterday if I needed to include anybody else, you didn't add her, so do you want me to send the invite?
Yeah, let me see if she's here, she was here earlier.
I, I, you know, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Kradic, about exploring other search avenues. And, and, you know, I, there's nothing wrong with exploring, and I think we need to take consideration the cost, but I still think we could get Melissa and whoever to go on and start formulating whatever, Bill, and I don't know whatever they need to ready to push send once we make a decision in two weeks.
Well, that's what I'm asking them to do.
If that's what you want.
To do their due diligence and gather the information and report back to us by the next meeting, so we make a determination as to how long the search is gonna last and all these other little, uh, questions that might arise during this time.
The only negative is, we are behind the eight ball with our superintendent leaving the end of July. And so we're talking, next meeting is May the 4th, is that right?
The 7th.
7th, I think.
Okay, so we're talking two weeks and two days that we're gonna lose, but whatever.
Well, for that matter.
We can instruct them, Will, with your concerns, we can go ahead and instruct them to do that and keep us updated, um, along the way until our May 7th meeting. I'm, I'm in agreement with doing that and seeing if there's any other avenues that we can explore to advertise this position. I think the more, the more avenues, the better. You know, to, to broaden the search for just the right candidate.
So what are you talking about, two weeks? Talking about roughly two weeks?
Two weeks. Prior to the meeting. Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I think, I think we could use that time to, uh, look at all the different, uh, possibilities, and if we wanna potentially use a consultant or not, other than the one that was mentioned, and I, I just think then we'd have all the information needed to make a reasonable decision.
Okay.
That's fine. Uh, could we go on and have them check out other consultants and get that information to us? If it's possible, maybe within the next week. I, I'm, I'm guessing we could find out what's out there besides the School Board Association.
Yeah, we could, we can look at other, other avenues. Um, but, um, one, one thing I will tell the board, just as an FYI, uh, a- any consultant firm you go with, um, there, there's gonna be, uh, at least a five-digit bill that goes along with that, uh, so that, that's just, that's just up uh, the cheapest I've ever heard of is between 25 and $30,000 uh, for any type of, uh, consulting firm to do a search process. Uh, but, uh, we can double-check and, and see around here, and we can even contact, uh, um, our attorneys, because they're aware of, uh, some other firms that have done things for, um, some of the larger school districts, and we can see what kind of, uh, uh, costs are out there for their process. There's Ms. Mackin.
Hi, Ann.
Hi, Ann.
Hi there. I, I did wanna mention one thing to everyone. Melissa Futrell will be on maternity leave at the end of July. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
Okay.
All right, how comfortable do you feel at this point, Ann, that we could, um, accomplish hiring the best, um, person for the job with us advertising it with the different websites that the state board would use? Do you think we could do this um, on our own, or do you think it's worth the money to hire the State Board of Education to do the search?
I, I think we could do it on our own, um, as long as I hit as many sites as we can hit. I know we did it, um, beforehand, and I know Melissa has everything saved, um, on all of the avenues we took to advertise. The whole idea is getting it out to advertise it thoroughly throughout, we can advertise throughout the state easily, I believe.
And what timeframe would you open it up? Would you open it up for 30 days, 45? What do you think would be a good timeframe?
I would, I would start with the 30 days.
Okay.
Ann, if we instructed you to start the search, how long would it take you to get everything and push send?
Um, say that to me again, cause I didn't hear you clearly.
If we decided we wanted you, our human resource department, to do the search, and we said, okay, we're gonna do it in-house, how long would it take you to get everything ready and start doing the search electronically? Like, is it a couple?
Melissa is Melissa's in the office tomorrow, and, um, I can, we can sit together and we can look through all of the items that we had for the one that we did previously, and, um, I could really give you a good answer, um, after tomorrow, as we, we walk through all the steps we took. I don't wanna give you the wrong answer at the top of my head.
Okay.
Any other comments?
What about an outside? Have you?
I was
ever used an outside?
I was here when the School Board Association did it, and, um, and they were super thorough. They did everything. Um, my hands were not in any, uh, any part of it. Um, they did all the advertising, they did the formulation of the application, I should have started with that, the advertising, um, the reference checking and all of that, where, um, we did not play any part of that, and we did have numerous, um, candidates also. And they did the interviewing, I believe, at, um, I'm trying to think, did they, at the bank, as a matter of fact? They used the room in, in the town, towns' bank.
Have we ever used an outside search group besides the School Board Association?
I have not.
So, Ann, are you saying that only they did the interviews, and then they, what, they picked out the top two, three, whatever, and then we interviewed, or they are the only ones that did the interviews?
Oh, no, no, the board is involved in every piece of it.
Okay.
Meaning that you will get to look at the candidates with them also, and, and they'll narrow them down first, so that you don't look at anybody that isn't qualified.
And when, when we set up our principal, that's what you and Melissa have done. You've narrowed it down, much like the School Board Association.
Exactly.
But we'll be advertising on more sites for the superintendent than, superintendent than what you normally do for the principal positions, right?
I, I believe so, and I wanna look at all of the places that we did advertise, um, for, uh, the last superintendent's position.
I mean, there very well could be more avenues available to you since then, uh,
Sure.
for conducting this type of search, seeing as how we've progressed in time with all the internet, this, that, and the other, not just being able to hold this meeting today.
Right, and I can, I can actually research and get more information for us also. I can talk to other school systems also to see how they, what, um, avenue they, they went to find their superintendents also, and they might have some great ideas for advertising for us to use too.
Well, I know we, uh, advertised on Indeed, and we got, you know, applicants from Northern Virginia and a few other states, because that's a quite national place that, uh, candidates would look at.
Correct.
Do you, do you feel like, um?
Go ahead, Mr. Kradic.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna ask her if she felt like, um, with our, our current environment, with the coronavirus and everything going on, did she have a feeling one way or another as to how that might impact what we're doing, and would we possibly need a wider window than a shorter window, or what's her, uh, interpretation of that?
I'm, I'm very concerned about the coronavirus piece, because right now, um, and I'm going to just use an example, we, we had a candidate to hire at Currituck Middle School who did an outstanding ju- um, interview and actually, uh, looked like an excellent, um, teacher. We offered the position to her in music. She waited a few weeks to give us the, her reply, but because of the coronavirus, she did not want to accept, because she was worried on how long this was going to take, um, where everything was going to be taking place, um, electronically and digitally. Um, and she wasn't sure how long, um, until, how much time it would take to get the school system back to, um, having the students back in the classroom and everything back to normal again. So right now, hiring is really, um, difficult.
Okay.
Was she concerned about her pay? It, was that it?
It wasn't the pay, it was with moving.
Ah.
Moving to the area, and then also, um, uh, getting comfortable with the job versus meeting the students face-to-face if she had to start off electronically.
That would make sense for a teacher.
Yeah, it's, and, uh, I, I think it sure does. And worried about leaving the place that they're at to come to another place where, uh, they'll, they'll wanna wait a year before they make that big move.
With the, um, with the accepting applications, doing the search, that would not be affected by the coronavirus, correct?
Correct, it would not be.
Okay.
Any further discussion? I have a first and I have a second on the floor. All in favor?
Can I amend my motion?
Yes.
I would like to amend my motion that we do, uh, a search with our, well, that we investigate, the best way to do a search, that our human resource department department gather information and share it with us as soon as possible, and we be ready to make a decision at the next meeting as to how we're going to do this search.
And I'll get right on that.
All right, I second that motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ann.
You're welcome.
All right, that's, that's all we have, um, for today. Mark, can you think of anything else that we need to discuss?
He's just, uh, stepping back from the restroom for one second.
Oh, okay, okay.
Wasn't he gonna mention about capital outlay?
Greetings.
Mark.
Yes.
Do you want to discuss anything else? Bill said maybe capital outlay budget item.
Yes, we wanted, uh, uh, that was gonna be the, the main topic when it was just a work session. Um, we, uh, or I have made contact with the, uh, the county manager, and we are still on schedule to have to produce our budget, uh, to the commissioners by May 15th. Uh, and so at the May meeting, uh, we're going to need to, uh, not only act on capital outlay, uh, but we're gonna have to act on a budget resolution for next year. Um, will be very interesting, um, not just, uh, with the, uh, current situation we have with the, uh, the virus and the, um, the, the, uh, closed school sites and, and digital learning, uh, but we're completing an entire school year uh, wi- without a state budget, uh, and, uh, the, the state is getting together, uh, next week uh, to, um, I think, begin their short session. Uh, and so they've got some, uh, things that they have to take under consideration for this spring as far as waivers to some of the laws that they have in place, and then they have to start considering um, budget for next year, uh, at the state level. Um, but again, just, it, I, I can't, I, I can't state it loudly and clearly enough. We are operating this school year on an 18, 19 budget at best. Uh, it's just the recurring funds from the 18, 19 budget, and so our sincere hope is that if they can't get us to where we need to be on the timeline, at least get us to a 19, 20 budget for the 2021 school year, and then we're not working two years, uh, in arrears, um, you know, from allocations from the state. So, uh, we'll see what they, um, uh, end up, uh, determining in their short session. But with that being said, um, typically what we've done is we've always had a work session before the board meeting where the capital outlay budget is approved, to go through the capital outlay items, uh, that we have on our list, uh, so the board can see, uh, what we're considering for our capital outlay plan, if you will, uh, for next year. Um, the rules of that process changed last week. Uh, we were, uh, under the impression that we were gonna get the, the, our, our new level, uh, which for the past two years has been 1.4 million dollars, uh, but in talking to the county manager last week, um, they're estimating that there could be a 30 to 40% decline, uh, in tax revenues, uh, and, uh, the sales tax, uh, I believe is our number one um, fueler of our capital outlay budget. Um, so he said that, um, in, in order to, uh, plan for that reduction in tax receipts, that they wanna take us back to what used to be the typical, uh, capital outlay uh, allocation of a million dollars rather than 1.4. Um, as of Thursday and Friday of last week, we had our budget uh, proposal, capital outlay, uh, at 1.4 million. So we had a special meeting yesterday with our, uh, our cabinet, uh, to take it from 1.4 down to 1 million. Uh, and I think we actually got it a couple thousand, less than 1 million. But we consider the 1 million level now to be just about, um, um, necessity-only, uh, type of, uh, expenditures in capital outlay. Uh, this, this will sound like a horrible statement to make, but, uh, a million dollars doesn't go as far as it used to, uh, you know, with, uh, capital projects. And with that being said, we have activity bus annual payment coming out of capital outlay, and we're now coming this, uh, for the first year, next year, we'll have our half of the mobile unit, um, lease-to-purchase contract coming out of, uh, this capital outlay. So between those two, Matt, what is it? Uh, what's that gonna be, 200,000 coming out?
Uh, if, if the county gives us the half of the modular classroom payment that they, uh, that they have promised, it's gonna be 150.
Okay, so 150, so, um, of our million dollars, uh, we really only have 850,000 to spend on maintenance and technology needs and capital outlay, because our, our multi-year lease-to-purchase, um, options, uh, modular classrooms and, uh, uh, activity buses, you know, we'll take that 150 right off the top. So if I could call on Ms. Doughty, um, she's gonna produce on your screens, um, our capital outlay um, spreadsheet. Uh, we'll also send it to you electronically, uh, once this meeting's over with, and then you can review it and, uh, uh, make any suggestions that, uh, that you wanna make. And I think it's gonna get bigger. Um, just give Ms. Doughty a second. Well, we'll try to get it to, to Dobny, uh, Dobny level.
Thank you.
Mark, did they demand that we reduce it to a million, or did they suggest it?
Uh, it, it, uh, coming from the county manager, i- it, it sounded more like a directive rather than a, a suggestion. Um, the, the comment that was made was that regardless uh, of what we do with this capital outlay, uh, the county is gonna have to go into their fund balance uh, to, uh, to make next year's budget work, uh, and the, uh, it, it's the comfort level of how deep into the fund balance, um, the, they're, they're willing to go, uh, i- is, is gonna be what our budget amounts to. Um, as far as operating money, it was told to me that right now, the formula stands um, in the budget, uh, to be funded. Um, so, uh, our operating money is supposed to be where it's supposed to be, uh, but the reduction came in capital outlay.
Um, so the capital I, I think the capital money, if I'm not mistaken, doesn't that come from the transfer, tax, sale, the 1%? Isn't that where most of our capital money comes from?
Yes, that, yeah, it is one of the, the fueling pieces, yeah.
And I know they're facing a lot of capital, uh, issues or so. And I know they're facing a lot of capital issues ourselves, but to take on the cost of the mobile units, or half of the cost of the mobile units out of our previously yeared allocated amount, we might want to consider having further discussions. How's that?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. Yeah, I'm fine with that, but I, we'll put it in here for now, because we don't want to slow that process. We want to make sure that those mobile units get up this summer. And so if we want to have further discussions, and if the end result is that the county can take it all on, then we'll have that amount to put towards something else.
I would caution, I would rather us not lend this to the county. Looking at it, we can always go down, but we can't go up. And I know that they have just sent out a message this morning that they're opening up the beach where we get a lot of revenue to non-resident property owners in two days, or maybe tomorrow. And they're opening it up to visitors, as their plans are, May 15th. So perhaps it will not be the 40% that they anticipated. I would, and I'm concerned about us with these payments, and especially unit payment where they said they do have, do we have that in writing?
I don't think we have it in writing, but it is part of the minutes of their work session. And so we, that was in a public meeting that they made that statement. And so, you know, we do have at least that.
Can we at least get an email going, Mark, where you just want to confirm that with them? So we have an email saying that, please?
Okay, I can do that.
Okay.
Further discussions about this total reduction, not necessarily just the portion of the mobile unit. And I'd still think we should submit something in the timeline that they want, which I think you said, May 15th. But I think we need to obviously get this, review this internally. But we need to have some many discussions, maybe outside of just you and Ben, is my suggestion. That's all. I'm just saying, I'm not saying they're in the greatest situation, but I'm not sure they're getting a clear picture of exactly what situation we're in.
Karen, have you talked with Ben?
I have not. I think we need to set up a meeting, Mark, with Ben and possibly Bob, and just touch base with the pandemic and everything that's been transpiring. I think we need to get together and just go over some things, just a friendly conversation, even if it's a meeting such as this, just so they can get a clearer picture of where we are financially. And I know they are having some financial difficulty too, but I think we need to work together at this point.
All right.
We have a fund balance. We don't have one. So we need to keep that in mind, where our fund balance is, because we're in worse shape than they are.
Yes.
I'll try to set something up in the next week or so.
Okay. All right. Now, Renee, I can see part of this, is it meant to where we cannot scroll down? Oh, here it goes. Okay.
Yeah, she's got control of it, because it's not to your own, it's not to your individual computers yet. You're just looking at it like a movie screen. And so.
Are you gonna be sending this to us?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
What you'll see on here is there'll be some, some tagged colors. The blue items, I believe, are gonna be on our lottery request. And so that's in addition to our capital outlay budget. The lottery money is gonna remain available as it has been until the county starts paying bills for the new elementary school. And then it was told to me that the lottery money is going to be used to offset the debt that the county takes on with the new elementary school. Then my assumption would be, once that debt is taken care of, then the lottery monies would return. So in essence, your capital outlay end number is gonna go down, because you won't have access to the, let's say, $300,000 to $400,000 annually that we use lottery money for.
And again, I think that needs, we need to get some kind of in writing, you know, some kind of guarantee that that doesn't suddenly get forgotten, that, you know, okay, now this debt's paid, and we need the lottery money.
Right. Part of that, part of that is in law. Yeah, part of that is in law, because lottery is supposed to be designated for school capital projects. But yeah, getting it in writing locally would be a good idea.
And at some point, we've got to have a discussion about the cost of operating an additional school.
That's been out there.
That, that, well, we've got to get some help, because as Bill has pointed out, numerous, we are in the shape we're in because of opening all these new schools with no change to the formula.
That's right.
Right.
I'm not sure that's the only reason we're in the shape we're in, but that certainly didn't help.
Right. And that was, there was an initial presentation. Right. There was an initial presentation by the county manager, when he started to estimate how many new buildings were coming over the next 10 to 15 years. And he made a two-part presentation to the commissioners, and one was, here's the cost of construction, and then here's the cost of running the new building. And so that, that information has been presented in a report form to the commissioners, that as you open a building, there is the cost of doing business locally on each building. So the hope is that that report wasn't talking retroactively, but it was talking in the future. And so as you open this new elementary, and then the next building down the road, and the next building down the road, each building will have operational funds. And we did a calculation, and the new elementary school, if we took Moyac Middel, because of its size, and Shawboro, because it's the most current elementary school built, we kind of averaged those numbers together, and it's right about $700,000 annually that you'll need in operational costs. And so there's a number you can keep in your mind, that will have to become part of future formula discussions.
Can we also get something in writing to them, Mark? And we need some of this in writing.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, he has the initial, like I said, he has, yeah, he has the email with the cost estimate in it. And what I can do is I can, I can follow up with a letter saying that we want to make sure that this is still, you know, part of the financial plan for the county, because it's a necessity.
Great.
Okay. Okay, so blue, blue is lottery, yellow, yellow is.
Our initial cut.
The initial, yeah, the initial cuts from when we went from over 1.4 down to the 1.4. So those are in yellow. And then in gold, those are the newest, when we went from 1.4 down to 1 million. And so those are all over in the cut line to the far right. As is typical, we were in the $2 million range again for requests, and we just have to work our way back. We value the input from all of our building, but especially at the million dollar level, it comes down to things that are necessity, or things that impact whole schools, or whole departments at schools. And so some of the things that were suggested that, you know, don't touch on students every single day, or they don't touch on a high-end number of students, they had to be put on the waiting list for now.
Is this the complete list with the cuts, or this is the revised list with additional cuts? Or what is, what is it we're seeing here?
This is, you should see it all.
Okay, you indicated some tough decisions had to be made, once they came from the buildings, and you guys, you know, started examining the request. My question is, is this as it came from the building, and then we're looking at the request and adjustments? Or are we looking at a new list that's been refined down?
Mr. Kradic, the list that came from the building, some buildings brought us half a page, and some buildings brought us a half a ream of pages. We had to, as with every year, we had to take their top five or six requests and try to fit them into the list. I can scan in and send everyone the requests from the schools, but at this point where we are right now with the cuts, I think you could look at it all you want, but I don't, but we're not gonna be able to do anything with it, unfortunately.
I understand, and I appreciate that. If it wouldn't be too much trouble, I would like to see that for food of thought on my own. And if I'm engaged with any discussions, I can articulate what I feel reflects the true hardship that we're facing. I mean, that I'm expecting you to forward that over to additional information. I want to have that in my own mind, in my own heart. And I want to be able to, if I see something, try to do something about it.
That's fine. I'll, I can scan all those documents in and email it as a package to all the board members.
Yes, sir. I mean, if it's, if it's, I mean, if it's reams and reams.
There's, there are a couple of schools that went five or six pages deep, but it's not that big a deal. I can get it to you.
Yes, sir. I thank you. And I'm not saying I'm gonna disagree with this list. I just want to understand what they're, what they're facing, and what they feel like their need is.
Okay. One item that I wanted to mention specifically in here that is on the, on the reduction list, Ms. Doughty, if you can go down to the high school. You'll see the second item has the track resurfacing. Definitely, definitely, definitely a need at the high school. But track season isn't until this time next year. And so, much like the discussion about the superintendent's search and trying to figure out what this, the virus restrictions are doing to either the budget or whatever, we thought that the track resurfacing could be on hold for right now. And then, when everybody gets a better idea of what the budget is, and what the capital outlay dollars are over at the county, we can make a special extra request to get the track added in, you know, as another capital outlay item. You know, being a former track athlete, I know what it means to have a track that is in safe and usable condition, and our track is in need of a resurfacing. But at almost $200,000, we need you just to hold on that for a second. And then, at the end of the summer, if things are in better shape than people predicted, then we can go before the commissioners and make a special request and get that thing ready for competition next spring. If track competitions look the way they've looked in the past, you know, we'll get that ready to go, you know, in the near future.
I think that's mighty dangerous to plan that way, because we know they weren't going to have any track activities this year on the track, because it's in such bad. And we can, we cannot count on the commissioners to give us extra money. We can't do it. I honestly don't think we should make any decisions based on what if this pandemic, because honestly, it's uncharted waters. We don't know how bad it's gonna be. I'm optimistic that they're opening up May 15th. So I still think we should submit everything we need, Mark. I do. And, you know, I'm looking down at that electronic marquee. I believe somebody, Todd Parker, had been a sizable anonymous donation for that marquee. And Hannah made like $1,000 or $1,500 donation towards it. I know they've got some money towards that. They don't.
Yeah, the anonymous, the anonymous donation that I've heard about, that was sizable, that was somebody that is very, very focused and very fond of the athletic department. And so I think the biggest donation that I've heard of to the athletic department was to go towards the scoreboard costs, not the marquee out front. But I do know that Dr. Matney has been doing some fundraising contacts to try to get the amount of the marquee out front down. And so he has some, he has some donations, but I think the amount we have here is 15,000. And the marquee, I think the marquee is twice that. And so if they have had some donations from, you know, Town Bank and Howard Hannah, or wherever, that that's probably going towards the 15,000 that he has said he was gonna try to raise on his own, and that we would pick up the other half of it. But again, when we get to a point of an HVAC system, or a roof upgrade, or resurfacing, and the marquee out front, the marquee out front has to take a lower priority level.
I understand. It's just, when you go out, I don't know, when you go out and you accept donations from Town Bank or whoever, I mean, we certainly have to make sure that those donations go for what they were donated for.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. Yeah, but they might just have to be held for a little bit before we actually can act on it. And folks know that if people have, you know, item-specific donations, then that's what they're supposed to go for. Matter of fact, I heard the conversation already, that Todd and Dr. Matney both said that they've been in conversations with Larissa about keeping specific donations in specific categories. And Larissa is a quality finance officer. She knows all about that. And so we've got the scoreboard money in one place. We've got the marquee money in another place. And so as people make donations, we'll ensure that that goes to the proper, proper item.
Can we get this sent to us and let us review it? And just like, we're gonna put off the search for the intended approval. Can we, can you not send this to anybody until we've had a chance to really weigh in on it?
Oh, yeah, that's what we're doing. Yeah, this would be, this was qualifying as the work session where we presented where we were, and then we'll send you guys the document in your email. And then you can, you can review it between now and the May board meeting. And then we'll have to act on it then.
Okay, great.
I got a question. So how old is that track surface?
Ms. Doughty?
10.
I was gonna say 10.
Is that the life expectancy of something like that for that cost? I have no idea. I'm just asking.
I'm learning myself, Mr. Kradic, on those tracks. After meeting with the contractors that I met with, the life expectancy with no recurring maintenance is about 10 years. They can extend that life five to eight more, if you get them to come back every two to three years and do a seal coat on it to protect it. And that was the plan, is to get this new track and try to do some maintenance on it to extend the life on it to more than 10 years.
Okay. And then last question pertaining to that track. Is, is any of that where it's having problems gonna impact the use where the children that have to go to the CTE programs across there?
No, they, it's, there are patches all around the track that are damaged. We've repaired them since I've been here. I've bought multiple repair kits to repair patches, but it's more of a danger for runners on a track than it is people that are walking across. on a track than it is people that are walking across. If there's anything in that pathway that needs to be repaired, we can patch that for now.
That's fine. The reason I ask is because we determined that, I guess, when we were putting the greenhouse in, that a portion of that was to be traveled back and forth for not only that program, but I'm assuming the automotive and others.
Yeah, yeah. For the board's information, all-weather tracks, which is what that track surface is, they call it all-weather rather than the old-fashioned cinder track, when you have those tracks, it is very highly recommended to have coverings, and so there would be walkway coverings over top of the track, and then the CTE people that were going from, you know, the back of the middle school to the high school, they would just cross at the areas where you have the protective walkway covering over top of the track. At the same time, high schools love their pageantry, and when you do homecoming, they're bringing vehicles, you know, into the stadium, and so when you're doing that, you're really supposed to have a protective covering over top of the track as well to make sure that no matter how slow they're going, those are a lot heavier than any of the runners that are running on it, the vehicles, and so they can do some wear and tear to an all-weather track too. So as you do resurface the track, it might be a good investment to find some protective coverings so that you can do the floats and things like that at homecoming time and not damage the surface.
Good point.
Any further comments?
Okay, so we will send this document to the board, and again, the county is still planning on doing their budget sequence on the same calendar that they always have, and so we'll have to make some approvals of budget resolutions in the capital outlay listing at the May meeting so we can make the May 15th deadline.
You know, we need to keep in mind, I know you mentioned we don't have a budget, we're still running off of 18, 19, and, you know, I've talked to some folks at state level, and they're not anticipating that we even get a budget, and they're not anticipating that their teachers even get the raises. So, you know, we have, we've struggled the last year or two with having enough money and pulling out of what little bit of a fund balance we had. We can't, we just cannot. We, and, you know, I have major concerns about us operating with this little fund balance. I do, so I don't think we should go make big cuts right now, I really don't. That's just my thought.
You were cutting out. We should make big cuts, is that what you said?
I don't think we should make big cuts in our requested budget. Because we're going to get hit from the state, we're going to get hit from the county, and we don't have extra money in our pot to provide services to our student. Not have it, we do.
That's where it's going to happen, it's going to be a national occurrence, and you're going to find that everybody's going to end up paying more to get less. That's my prediction, and we're going to live it, and we're going to pay more to get less as a result.
Hi, this is Larissa.
Nobody's going to have the same money that they once had. We're going to have to...
We're going to share wealth? Okay.
Go ahead, Larissa.
Oh, good, you guys can hear me? First of all, I just want to say thank you, I appreciate what I'm hearing. I'm a very conservative spender, and I'm not sleeping at night right now, so I appreciate that the board is saying what they're saying about the fund balance, about cutting back and having negotiations with the county. I appreciate that very much. Also wanted to let you know that I will have the first draft of the, the first draft of the budget that I'd like to present to the county to Mr. Stefani by the end of the day. So he'll be able to look that over, we'll be able to tweak it, and then we'll get that to you for the next, your next board meeting, or sooner if you would like.
Thank you.
As soon as possible.
Yeah, okay.
If that sounds good.
To Mark today. Go ahead. I also wanted to let you know it's going to look a little different, and I'm hoping that it'll look, it'll be easier for all involved to see where the money's coming from. Not so much the expenses, but where the money's coming from. So this is my draft, hopefully you guys, you know, will like it. If not, we'll make some changes, and we'll get that done by May 15th.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further comments or discussion?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Y'all stay safe.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.